Okay, you guys, yeah, let's have them go up and then we'll do a picture with them. Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
So if the quarter recognition is on the agenda, can I skip it?
Yeah, okay, okay, skip. Okay, sure thing. Hello, everybody. We will start in about just a couple of seconds. Okay, welcome to our city council meeting. It's exciting to see a room full of students. We're so excited to have you all here. Today is November 6, 2025, and I get to provide the opening. I'm Mayor Tran, and this is our city council members, and so we're so super excited to represent you and be here. We just had an election, so I just wanted to talk about that really quickly. Just so grateful for the opportunity that we have, living in America, to be able to cast our ballot and vote for people that we want to represent us. I think it's an incredible opportunity and privilege that other countries don't have, and I think sometimes we forget how important the process is. And so for everyone who was actively engaged in that, and you were looking up your candidates, and you were dropping off your ballots, or mailing the mail, or voting in person, I just want to thank you for participating, because that's what makes America great, and that's what makes us so special here. So I will provide an opening prayer, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, okay? Our dear Father in Heaven, we are so thankful for the opportunity that we have to serve. We're grateful for our residents here in Kaysville, and our neighbors and guests, and we ask you to please bless that we'll have a spirit of peace and collaboration in this meeting. We're thankful for the freedoms which we enjoy living in America. We're thankful for those who serve our country to protect our freedoms, and we're grateful for the friendship and the opportunities that we have to be together, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Okay, so the first item on our agenda will be postponed. That would be item 3A if you have the agenda. We'll now move to item 3B, which is honoring-
Can I make a quick motion that we move a presentation of the awards, item D, to the top of the list? I kind of, I feel like Chris should get like recognition in front of everybody that's here to see the awards, if it's an option.
Sure, absolutely, we can do that. Okay, and actually, our second item called to the public, no one signed up to speak, so. Okay, so do we need a motion for that? I think we're okay. We'll just move item D to the beginning of our presentations and awards. So I'll turn the mic over to Dave Steierman, who is the Wasatch Front Football League President. Thank you for joining us. Yes, if you'll just stand right there, thank you.
Tonight, we honor a woman whose dedication, leadership, and unwavering passion have left an indelible mark on the Wasatch Front Football League. For more than three decades, for 30 years, she has given her time, her heart, her talents to this organization, not for accolades or recognition, but for the love of the game, and most importantly, for the kids who play it. Serving in roles as director, executive secretary, vice president, statistician, and parent, she has been a steady hand guiding this league through growth, change, and countless seasons. But titles alone don't tell the full story. What truly sets her apart is how she served with humility, with integrity, and with an open mind. She has always welcomed new ideas, embraced change when it meant progress, and made it her mission to ensure that every decision, big or small, was made with the best interest of the youth athletes at heart. Her office door, her inbox, her heart have always been open. She listened, she led, and she lifted this league to new heights because of it. Through her leadership, she has not only helped shape a better league, but she has shaped lives. Thousands of young athletes who learned teamwork, discipline, confidence. Under her watch, she has mentored volunteers, inspired fellow board members, me included, and built a legacy grounded in service. Tonight, we offer our deepest gratitude. Your 30 years of service will never be forgotten, and the impact you've had will continue to ripple through the community for generations. Thanks for being the backbone, the heart, and the soul of the Wasatch Front Football League. You are and always will be one of the greats. Chris Willey.
I just need to take a moment and just, whoops, Cole Stevens on the Director of Parks and Recreation, and just, this is the epitome of what Chris is. She, this is what she is. This is the core of who she is, and our recreation programs are in Kaysville City, this is just one component of what we provide for the community, and Chris is the center of this, and just, I'm so grateful that she works for Kaysville City and works for our department. So I just wanted to make sure I said that.
Truly what an honor, and I just want to say how important this football program is to Kaysville City. It's one of the lower participation programs, but honestly, we have more volunteer hours and more family commitment and community commitment to our football program. It's just been an honor to serve in all aspects of the WFFL, and as a volunteer and as a parent. Thank you, Kaysville City, for supporting our Little League program. Thank you.
I'd like to add my appreciation. Thirty years ago, I was teaching little kid karate lessons here in Kaysville, and I remember working with Chris, having her help me set them up. I think the city was charging me like $5 a class or something. And you've just been such a solid person, and just a wonderful person, and employee, and making sure that the whole program works. So, Chris, thank you. You're very well-known and very loved, so we appreciate you. Okay, we have another award. Brian, this is to honor three recipients of the I Can Make a Difference program for good sportsmanship, which is an outstanding program that we have in the city.
Dropping all my treasures. So the I Can Make a Difference Award, we started the spring of this year. What we're trying to do is we're trying to recognize people that are making a difference in our program. We're trying to let coaches, parents, kids, they can nominate each other. They can nominate someone that they see on the field or off the field making a difference. We had 30 people nominated for this fall session with soccer, flag football, tackle football, and some of our other programs. We have three of the winners that we want to present. This award is made possible by Boondocks. They've given four, sorry, they've given two four-hour passes to each of the winners, and he was not able to be here tonight, but he wanted to congratulate them. Boondocks has been a big supporter of this, and then we have a little gift for them, and we want them to be recognized by you. So I'm going to have first Carter Allen and Beckham Be- Beckham Beckett come up here. That's Baggett, sorry, Baggett. Beckham, you can stand right there. I'm just going to read you why they were nominated. Our other recipient is not able to be here. His name is Milo Skedlock. He was not able to attend today. But we have right here next to me Carter Allen. He's been in our flag football program, and he helped, he helped with the volunteer coaching. So his dad was assigned to coach as a last minute to help us out, and he stepped up to help his brother. And this is what they said about him. Carter volunteered to help his younger brother's flag football team, along with his dad, Ryan, and has gone above and beyond not only teaching kids how to play the game of football, but being an incredible mentor and example to the whole team. The first practice Carter had some of, wait, Carter and some of the friends he had recruited to help coach immediately greeted my son, welcomed them, and helped them find somewhere to warm up, then handed each kid an armband with plays that they could stay up at night and practice and get ready as a team. They ran great, he ran a great practice, hyped the kids up for the first game, and handed each kid a laminated copy of the plays review at home. I was so impressed. At the games, Carter and his friends were always active on the sideline cheering on his team, making sure that everyone had a positive experience, had a great time. My son made a mistake in their first game. Carter quickly told him that it was okay and gave him a chance to try again. What an exceptional impressive, exceptionally impressive to me was after the game had ended, they finished their team huddle and cheered. Carter made an effort to walk back to both of the refs, shake their hands, and tell them thank you. I'm so glad that my son got to see that. I cannot think of a better experience for a junior high boy or girl to see high school kids and such great leadership and respect. Pretty awesome. And then next to him is Beckett Baggett. He's in the tackle football program. He's a fourth grader. And his is not as long, but he is the first to make a tackle, and he's also the first to help up his opponent back up and to give him a pat on the back. He does make a difference on the field. So thank you so much for what you guys do. And Carter, this is for you. We got a little goodie bag from Kaysville City. There's a water bottle in there, and then these are the passes. So we got two four-hour passes. Thank you so much. Do you guys want to get a picture with him?
Yeah, we want to, yes.
Parents, here, here, come on up. Parents, come on up. Steve, Steve, you gotta come on up for a picture. Steve might not have ever won a sportsmanship award, but he did. So parents, if you want to stand by your own respective kid. Chris, do you want to come up? Cole? Chris, come here. All right. One more time for these two. All right, just one more thing. One more. Oh, look at that. All right, so we have a new trophy that we are going to put the names of the winning teams of our WFFL football program, the ones that win the mini-bowl. This is now the Chris Willey High Trophy. And they're going to want to raise it every year.
That's awesome. I love it.
So can we have, so we had two teams that competed. There are 21 different associations in the WFFL. They narrow it down by playing in regions and then making it into playoffs. In the playoffs, we have the top eight teams play each other for a mini-bowl championship, and then the next eight teams make it, and they play for a championship as well. Both of our teams that made it into the playoffs, that made it this far, both made it into the top gold bracket, and they both won in the gold bracket.
Yes, so cool.
So that's pretty awesome. There's only one other association that had two winners, but theirs was not. One of them was a silver, one was a gold, but we have two gold winners here tonight. So can I have the coaching staff of Pee-wee Gold? The Pee-wee Gold Division, it's actually Kaysville Brown. Come on up. And then can I have the Junior Pee-wee Gold? That's Kaysville Gold, come up. These were our two winning coaching staffs.
All right.
When Chris talked about the hours that they put in, these guys put in a lot of work. So most of our programs have a six-week program. They practice maybe one time a week, and then an hour game on Saturday. These guys, it's like a part-time job for them. They start, I don't know when they actually start, but we started in the end of July. And we started with our conditioning. That was five nights a week, an hour and a half, and they had to run all those practices. Then there's an eight-week program, and then the four weeks of playoffs, and they're practicing. How many hours do you have? They only have six hours of practice they can do a week, but they do, six hours of practice a week.
That's incredible.
So it is a huge amount of time that they put in and effort, but they do it all for the kids, which is really awesome. So we have the coaching staff right over here of the Brown team. Lad was not able to be here. He was the head coach, but we have Jesse Olson and Jesse Jensen, the two of the coaches. So they have five, six people on their coaching staff, but these two were able to be here. Then we have the Junior Pee-wee team right here, the Junior Pee-wee Gold team. We got Brandon Bishop, who's the head coach, and he's coached as a head coach for, this is his third year, fourth year? Fifth year, something like that. He's been a head coach every year he's been here. And then we got- You guys are brothers, right? We got brothers right here, coaching. This is another Jensen. It's Jeff Jensen. And then in the back right there, it's, yep, Brackett Jones. I get to know the head coaches quite a bit, because then they get annoyed with me, because I have to queue on tabs with them every, every day, every, every week, because they have to make sure that they're meeting these guidelines and these different things. So I get to know them, but I'm so grateful for what they do, and I'm grateful for what their assistants do. And then the hours of their teams that they're practicing, and the parents, it's a huge program for only 285 kids playing. It's the huge community involvement. So now let's give it up for those coaches.
Hey, real, real quick, what were each of their records?
This team right here never lost.
Okay.
Actually, I don't think you guys ever got scored on this year.
Okay, at any, at any point in time, did you think like we should let the other team just get one touchdown? He was afraid they were going to get scored on.
And this team only lost, then they only lost to one team, but they lost to them last year as well, right? That Morgan team. But- That was that rainy day that shouldn't have been canceled, and we were supposed to play here. We had to go up to Morgan and play. These guys ended up playing two Friday night games to get to where it was. I mean, it was, it was a lot to get through. Couple of issues with their team, but they prevailed, and they did well. They were in the mini-bowl last year and lost. Not because of the loss, but because of those kids. No, that's why they won, because of those kids back there. That's what he said. All right, now can we have the two mini-bowl championship teams come up here? Again, that's the Pee-wee Gold, sorry, Pee-wee Gold Division, but it's Kaysville Brown and Kaysville Gold, Junior Pee-wee.
Awesome. They're so cute, yeah.
Then we'll need you guys in just a second.
Yeah, do you want us for this one?
This trophy is yours as well.
Who do you want me? Here? Okay.
These are the fifth graders. What's your cheer, you guys? Right here, let's go. Okay, let's do it. Who leads it? Pee-wee Kaysville Brown.
I'll just, I'll just be on the chair.
Okay, team cheer, let's go. What is it? Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. That's so exciting, you guys. Have a great night. Thank you.
That was their combine for the whole year, right?
Okay. You did the Brian, they did Brian. Okay. Oh, they are? Oh, they are? Oh, cute family. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Thank you. See you. Okay, all right, everybody. We are on item four in the agenda, conflicts of interest. So council, do we have any conflicts to declare? No? All right, no conflicts. We are now on item five in our agenda consent items. Would someone like to make? Would someone like to make a motion to, make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A through C.
I'll second.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We are now on action item 6A. A resolution amending the fiscal year 2026 consolidated fee schedule related to electric vehicle charging station fees. Cole, are you presenting this?
I can. This is basically a handoff from Power Department. Brian with the Power Department, what's that?
You got dumped on again.
Yeah, it's all good. As you are aware, Brian Johnson came, I think it was two weeks ago, to the last city council, talking about the fee schedules for the EV charging stations. As we discussed, I met his staff, because they're all located on public property parks. There's one at Heritage Park, one at Barnes Park, well, not one, but that's where they are, and then some here. It was felt that it was best that they become a park asset, and so it's transitioning from Power's ownership will transfer to our park asset, and so we will manage and maintain that. So the consolidated fee schedule, that line item will show up in our Parks and Recreation fee schedule, but it's all the exact information that Brian reviewed with you two weeks ago. And Nick can correct anything that I've said that's wrong, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what we've, we've actually discussed this last meeting, and so we are just looking for a motion to approve this or to make an action on it. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution amending the FY26 consolidated fee schedule related to EV charging station fees.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Hunt, or no, sorry, councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, 6B. An ordinance adopting chapter 16-15 Massage Establishments of the Kaysville City Code and amending the FY26 consolidated fee schedule related to massage establishment fees. Nick.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis is here tonight if we have questions that are beyond my scope, but this is what we discussed at our meeting last time, two weeks ago, and I think it's ready for adoption unless the council has questions or concerns.
Okay, sounds good. Council, any discussion? Nope.
Councilmember- Did you have something?
Did you have something?
Oh, I was going to make the motion, so.
Oh, I just have a comment. I'm really happy to see that we're doing this. It's becoming a problem across the state in Wasatch Front, and so thank you to city staff and for putting this together, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, councilmember Hunt.
Okay, well, first, I just want to say also thanks to staff for putting this together, and point out all of the work that's been done by our new Assistant City Attorney. I think this and the other items we're discussing later are all because we now have additional bandwidth to get on top of these things, and I'm so excited to see some of these protections being put in place for our residents. So anyway, without, I'll just, I'll make a motion that we approve action item 6B, an ordinance adopting chapter 16-15 Massage Establishments of the Kaysville City Code and amending the FY26 consolidated fee schedule related to massage establishment fees.
No, second?
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Oaks?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. That ordinance passes. Now we are on work item 7A, discussion of updates and amendments to various public work ordinances. We'll bring up our Public Works Director, Josh Bellnap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I hope I don't get in trouble, but I'm going to go off on a little tangent here first. I got an email today that was a little, a little bit of a bummer, but I felt like this was appropriate, given the report that Cole's going to be giving a little bit later. Back in September, I had a friend of mine that works for UDOT that reached out and said, hey, do you have any like noteworthy, like active transportation type projects or initiatives that you think would be good for an award nomination? And I sat and thought about it, and I started jotting down some notes, and by an hour later, I had this laundry list of things, and I submitted the following nomination that I found out today, the nomination was not picked for the award, but we'll go with it anyway. My nomination reads as follows. Since 2020, Kaysville City Council and Cole Stevens have worked together to make active transportation and physical wellness a top priority for our residents and neighbors. In 2020, seeing the need and importance while contrasting the funding limitations, Cole and council began work on implementing a ramp tax initiative in line with state standards for one cent collected for every $10 spent on nonessential items. City Council knew this was not without financial impact, but they also knew that it could help capture revenues from potential users outside of the city. So after a series of public meetings and hearings, council adopted the resolution to create the ramp tax in Kaysville in 2021. This is not unique to Kaysville. However, in the past five years alone since this was adopted, and with a combination of ramp funds, grants, and property tax revenue, the city council has supported Cole on the following projects aimed at providing better access to active transportation facilities and health wellness opportunities. First, the rail trail pedestrian activated flashers that were installed in 2020. The rail trail hawk signal, which was upgraded first in 2020 and later in 2022. The Bonneville Shoreline Trail connection that included a bridge being flown in by helicopter to connect two portions of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. The Wilderness Park trailhead and restrooms, increasing what was about a 12 to 13 stall dirt parking lot to a paved lot with 86 stalls, handicap stalls, ADA ramps, and better access to restrooms. Increasing what was about a twelve to thirteen stall dirt parking lot to a paved lot with eighty-six stalls, handicap stalls, ADA ramps, and better access to restrooms. Working with other city staff on a design for a multi-use trail along Crestwood Road. West Davis Corridor trail enhancements that Cole is currently working on, in addition to other enhancements off of the West Davis Corridor. Rail trail parking lot and restrooms near Flint and Webb Lane. The Caysville Field House. And some details there. Goes on further, there are obviously a lot of important but competing needs within any city. But the dedication of our council, combined with Cole's efforts and vision, have started to change the culture of our community for the better, which will serve as a strong legacy for many years to come. I'm grateful for all of them and their efforts, and that is why I feel they should be selected for keeping Utah moving through better mobility. So I appreciate Cole, just blown away with, with the vision that he has and what he's constantly chasing. And couldn't be more grateful for council and their support of that work. Not, not just with budgets, but with, with vision as well. So with that, I will end the tangent, and we'll come back to Public Works related ordinances.
That, we should, and Josh, that was really nice for you to submit for that.
Honestly, I just need to say that if I knew that he was using my name in this, I wouldn't have given him the information that he was asking, so. It's too late.
Josh, that was really nice of you to submit for that, and well deserved for Cole.
I think, as a, as a resident, those are probably the most impactful things in my life and in my, my neighborhood's lives, is, is a lot of these active transportation projects. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
For about the last year, there's several smaller ordinances that we've been talking about, thinking about. And I'm gonna go off on another tangent here, so my apologies. Nick is, is one of my greatest friends. I don't call him like a coworker. My kids know that I refer to him and others as my work friends. And with Katie coming on, a process of slowly back and forth with Nick and trying to respect the schedule that he has. A year's worth of work came to a conclusion in about three weeks going back and forth with Katie, so I couldn't be more appreciative of her. But what you have before you is the result of coordination with Cole, coordination with the police department, and coordination with the city engineer on a couple of items. The first is parking ordinance. Starting with Chief Oberg about a year ago, started having issues in the business park with the employees of some businesses parking along the street and, and parking so close to the entrances of some of these businesses that, both a sight distance hazard, but also just getting trailers and bigger vehicles into the businesses themselves. And there wasn't really a lot there that, that police had to like point to, that, hey, this is a problem, but we don't have anything in ordinance. So what you see here, we've spent time looking at what other cities, counties, and municipalities have done. And we're proposing an ordinance that would give a property owner the ability to, you know, install some red curbing to help educate drivers, but also give the police department the ability to assist with education and maybe ultimately enforcement to say that within a commercial zone or within two hundred feet of a commercial zone or a mixed use, professional business, general commercial, light industrial, et cetera. Within that radius, that parking within eight feet of a mailbox or parking within eight feet of a driveway should be restricted. And, and give, give some kind of relief to some of these residents, but help the police department in their education for drivers. So this is, this is the first kind of draft of that. The second, as you see here, as we talk about sight distances. Currently, the city really only has one ordinance that refers to sight distances at intersections, and it's called the Clearview Triangle. It establishes a triangle that's essentially thirty feet on its legs, which works in some locations, but on busier roads where, you know, you're not a twenty-five mile an hour residential street in particular. I don't think that's enough. And particularly as we have additional developments coming down the line in the future. And also providing us the opportunity to evaluate if current intersections might need some adjustment. This would officially adopt ASHTO standards for sight distances, which in, in some cases are a little more, a little bit more robust. Going from thirty feet to upwards of, we use this ASHTO standard here at the intersection of Center Street and Main Street as they're remodeling the old Barnes Bank building and found that it doesn't meet the clear view, but it does meet the ASHTO. And we went out twice, the city engineer, myself, and the architect also had a traffic engineer come out and like, hey, you know, this actually meets ASHTO and, and there's good sight distances, but it, it doesn't meet the clear view. So we wanna, we wanna do something that maybe makes a little bit more sense there in both directions. This would only apply to intersections on arterials and collector streets. We wouldn't necessarily be looking to apply this to every residential street. The next, earlier this year, we had some ordinances. We adopted also an updated excavation permit. We didn't catch, we had changed in the excavation permit, the moratorium on cutting into new asphalt from four to three, and didn't catch it in nine dash two dash nine, so we're just bringing this in line with the excavation permit change that we made earlier in the year. And then the last, Caysville City, I, I, I think this was probably a difficult thing to do, I think in the eighties?
Yeah.
When, when the city council.
This is the only one I have a question on.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me provide some explanation and context here, and then absolutely. The city ordinance, we have three locations in ordinance where it's talked about how connection to a pressurized irrigation is required. Several years ago, a change was made to pull properties east of Highway eighty-nine out of that requirement because of issues with the irrigation companies being able to provide sufficient pressure at those elevations. What we're looking at here is we don't want a developer to come in to do a project elsewhere that they're running into difficulties with an irrigation company, like, oh, hey, you know, getting the shares in order or, or figuring out what, what changes might need to be made to the irrigation system. We don't want them to utilize that as a means of saying, oh, it's, it's not feasible, so that means I'm gonna use the city's culinary water for irrigation on my development.
Right.
And so that, that's the intent with the change here, but yeah, with, with that, on this and all of the other ordinances, we would love council's feedback and input.
This is the only feedback I have there, is because, you know, I, I've been adamantly a proponent of hooking up to press irrigation because I've been here longer than any of you have.
Correct.
And I just remember the, the commitment the city made to taking out a twenty-seven million dollar, twenty-eight, twenty-nine million dollar bond back in the late eighties, early nineties to put press irrigation in Caysville. And the only way that would work is if they said, all residential connections will tie into a pressure irrigation system. So for me, it, it, I, I honor what they did because it was a, I mean, for them to take out a bond like that back in that time was a huge commitment. I mean, it was amazing. So only thing I would ask is maybe you would look at wording this such that it says residential sites located in US eighty-nine corridor, instead of saying we'll not, we'll say shall be required to connect to their properties to the pressure irrigation system, unless the city engineer deems that a connection to a pressure irrigation system is not feasible. So just those two changes to say that it, you have to do it, because to me, it's, it's easier for staff to say, okay, you don't have to do it unless I tell you have to. For staff, it seems like it would be easier to say, you have to do it unless you can come up with a circumstance that says why you can't.
Right.
You know, I, I know we let a lot of houses up there without hooking to it, and in reality, they could have done it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a, a, a very good point to make, is that there, there probably are locations east of eighty-nine where it is feasible.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's a phenomenal idea. I, I, I understand the, the concern that the irrigation companies expressed when the ordinance was originally changed to pull the east side of eighty-nine out of that requirement, and Weber Basin also was asking for that change as well. But I, I, I tend to agree that like I, you know, what, what's done is done, but I, I wish that change had never taken place because of the intent.
I do too. I wish it would now.
And that would apply just to new builds?
Uh, yeah, correct, yeah, new, new construction, redevelopment in areas, so.
I mean, realistically, you, you can design a sprinkler system at twenty PSI. You know, I, I, I'm not designer of sprinkler systems. I asked somebody if you could do that, one of the managers of other irrigation companies, and he said, yes, you could. Doable.
I was impressed that you just knew that, so I thought, boy, Mike, Mike knows everything.
But no, I'm just saying that.
He makes most of the things.
Yeah, I just.
You sound credible.
So I, I would say, I would prefer to see that they shall do it unless the city engineer finds significant reasons why you could not.
I, I, I think that's a better clarification to make, because, because right now, that's, I think that's the intent behind it, that residential sites east of eighty-nine will not be required to connect unless the city engineer deems that a connection is feasible. But I, I think if you can make that clearer.
The intention is to connect.
You shall unless.
This seems to give, this seems to give just a free pass.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Andy used to say something frequently that you can say, yes, but, or you can say, no, unless. And I think this would be an appropriate situation to say, no, unless.
I agree.
You're essentially saying the same thing, but you're, you're being clearer behind the intent.
I think it's a lot of.
It puts an onus on them.
Yeah, an onus on the staff too, unless it says, you know, you gotta come up with a good reason why you don't have to, rather than why I should make.
That's a fantastic idea, and I think that's exactly what, what we hope to get.
That's fine.
That's great.
Counsel, so thank you.
My question is then about the business, well, the, the red striping. Will it apply over on Borough Market in that area?
Yeah, correct, so any, any commercial, light industrial, mixed use, et cetera.
I think that'll be great. The businesses over there have been asking.
The intent behind that, though, as you drive around in Caysville and, and other communities, one thing that you'll notice if you look at fire hydrants is you'll rarely see curb painted red in front of hydrants just because of the sheer volume. We've got nine thousand hydrants in Caysville, and paint typically lasts about two to three years at best, depending on how it was applied and the conditions. I don't think we'd want to get into a situation where we're trying to add that to staff of like, hey, let's go to all the commercial areas and, and let's paint all the curbs, but providing a resident, we've, we've worked with some residents, like, hey, we've, we've got paint available, we've even got rollers. Let's talk to you about the, the limitations and, and help you get that installed so that police can then be aware and assist you with education and enforcement, so. Yeah, great question.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
So just, this is following suit a tangent, but while we're talking about curbs, it's just reminded me that I've had two or three people just recently come up to me and be like, hey, you gotta change this rule about parking on the curb during the winter. And I'm like, nah, it's never gonna change, right? We need to be able to plow. However, I'm curious if there's ever been thought towards, like, I, I've been pondering it and thinking, would there be a way to do something similar to, you know, how fires, you can't burn a fire when it's a red day or what day or whatever? I mean, it seems like there would be times during those months that we could, like, with, with a pretty steady certainty, no, that's a green day. We're not gonna have a snowstorm. You can park there. And, and only make it so that we're going out and ticketing on the other days where there's possibility? Or what do you think about that? I mean, I hate to put you on the spot about that, but.
It, it's something that we, we do talk quite a bit about. Talking with other communities about what they're doing and, and wanting to avoid, oh my gosh, the forecast didn't call for snow. I parked out there and, and then I got a ticket. It, it, it does feel a little like, oh man, we're just painting with like some really broad brushes here to just say blanket no from here to here. That does simplify on one end, but it, it can create some difficulties and impact on, on users, residents. The, I, I like the way that, as we've worked with Jason and with Saul and Public Works is, and, and Saul is, is open with residents when they reach out to ask that like, hey, I, the ordinance says this, but when there is not snow coming down, there are better things for police officers to be doing than going out and, oh, there's a car, let's, let's get him.
Right.
And so I'll, I'll typically go out anytime we're plowing, I'll go in a plow truck, and I carry with me a, a bunch of flyers. So rather than tickets, we'll, we'll place flyers and, and try that route before like ticketing people like, oh, there's a, there's a snowflake on the ground and you broke the rule and we're gonna get you. And, and it, it has worked fairly well in terms of people like, oh my gosh, wow, yeah, I just moved here, I had no idea, or gosh, I didn't, I didn't even think about that. I, I, I do think that it's good to find a balance between making it so rigid or also making it complex. Some cities say, well, even days of the week, you have to park on this side of the street during the winter. And odd days of the week, you park on the other side of the street during the winter. Or other ways of trying to do this, this is, this is probably the, the simplest way to do it in terms of staff, like, oh, it's between this date and this date and this time and this time, midnight to six AM. I, I, I'm open to finding something that, that works well for people to accommodate people, especially things like holidays. I think the police chief is, has been really great, the, the policy that he's given to Public Works and his officers is, hey, several days before and several days after these major holidays, you got, you got family in town, you have people that are visiting here. And, you know, if, if that means that we gotta take plow trucks out again to clean up after some visitors leave, then, then that's what we're gonna do.
I just think, yeah, and maybe we just, maybe this is more of a think tank idea, but I like the idea, I don't, I hate the idea of it being up in the air as to when they'll ticket and when they won't, and who they'll ticket and when they don't. Like, if, if there was something though, you know, like I said, something on the city website or something that just populates that. I know, I know that would require more staff work to like look at the forecast and say like, okay, this is definitely a green day. Like, I think you could pretty, you know, you could know, but i- if it's yellow or red, you run the risk of getting a ticket. Like, it doesn't matter, you know, I don't know. It's just a thought, but.
What, I'm sorry.
No, please.
One of the reasons that we drafted that ordinance that way was for that clarity. Because we felt like, from a messaging standpoint, it's really hard to say, you know, at what source and at what percentage of, you know, chance of precipitation are we going to, you know, prohibit dri- parking? And one of the things that we wanted to do when we drafted it, and there's certainly good argument that you're making, is we wanted to be, have a, a simple message that would be easy for citizens to remember. And they could, and, and we, I'll, I'll be the first to admit that we used a very broad brush when we painted that.
Yeah.
But, but we tried to do that so that it was a simple message we could communicate.
Okay.
But, but it's clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the plus. There's no ambiguity, and so.
And I will say that when these guys are out plowing and it's snowing hard, to have a car in the road at night, it's very difficult because you're in those big ten wheelers your way up there, the plows are out there, you can't see half those cars, and they,
They're buried.
And, and it's hard for them to actually clear the road, and then the person leaves and that spot isn't plowed for, in front of the car or behind the car, you know, and so. And I, I understand totally why you want those clear. I really do.
I, I wouldn't change a thing.
Because of the difficulty of plowing when you have to plow.
To that part of the ordinance?
It is, it is difficult. It is, it is difficult.
I just wanna say, I really applaud the way you're handling it now, like carrying flyers in your vehicle. I've made the mistake on accident where I park on the curb and I completely forget at the end of the day, but I like it.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that from Chief Oberg and, and from his staff. Um, the, I, I think some small cities get a reputation of like, oh man, tickets is, is where we make our bread and butter. And Chief Oberg, I, I don't think he like encourages people like, oh, hey, you know, let's, let's leave the poor speeders alone. Uh, but I think this is one area where he's like, look, you know, people that park, you know, on the street in front of their home are criminals. Uh, so education is, is a more valuable tool than enforcement in those situations. And, and I only see tickets happening, uh, when it's, you know, hey, we've, we've left two or three flyers on this car trying to educate or, you know, last year we had the same vehicle parked here and we've tried to do some outreach and education. Um, and, and.
I would just caution Councilmember Adams because to make up for some of that lost revenue, they might have to enforce speeding a little bit more.
You're a mean.
Just, just a thought.
I thought you were gonna say something nice about Josh.
Oh, Josh is awesome.
No, don't, don't do that either.
I, I think it's, I think you've done a great job putting it together. I think it accomplishes what we're trying to accomplish. It's bright enough.
I appreciate the, the feedback on, uh, the water connection and, and would love it if there's anything else that council sees uh, uh, in, in terms of feedback. Obviously we'll be coming back and there is an, an additional opportunity for some of that feedback. So.
Okay.
Uh, now and, uh, over the next couple of weeks, if you're able to identify things, we, we would love to take that input, so.
Okay, everyone?
Thanks. I'll make a motion.
Okay, sure.
I'll make a motion that we move, uh, work item, uh, seven A, uh, with the recommended changes specifically on the pressurized irrigation.
A second.
Okay, Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the work Nick and, Nick and both of you on that. All right. Councilmember reports. Is anything, anyone?
Wow, that would be awesome if we went right to that.
I'm sorry. Oh.
Come on.
What was I thinking? Oh my gosh. You should be so offended. Parks and Rec annual report. We're so excited for this.
No, we're excited. I just first want to say thank you. I didn't realize Josh, uh, when he was asking for those facts was actually putting my name associated with all that, but just appreciative to the council for all the support that they do provide to the community through Parks and Recreation, our open spaces and our recreation programs. And hopefully what you saw tonight was just a small glimpse of what recreation and parks can do for a community that brings it together. And it, it is a, we view ourselves as an essential function of what, uh, the community is. Without Parks and Rec, the communities are a whole lot different. So we just appreciate you as a council for supporting, uh, Parks and Recreation in Kaysville. So this, you've probably seen this all before, but I think our, our title's a little bit deceptive as far as Parks and Recreation. It's a little bit more, um, it should be in bold up there. Other duties is assigned. But it's Parks, Trails, Recreation, Cemetery. All city facilities fall under our, uh, stewardship as well as community events, public rider, or public properties, right of ways, uh, of those things.
And EV parking.
An EV parking.
Yes, gotta add that.
So thank goodness that, that the power department is close by at our building down there that we can have them, uh, come help us when we have some questions. And then there's a, a couple of citizens' boards that we, uh, oversee and represent as well. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Ramp, and then the Historic Preservation Commission all have, uh, separate functions. We'll go to the next one. I'm gonna spend a little bit more time talking about the cemetery today than I, I normally do just because we've talked a lot about the cemetery this year with some ordinance changes back in February and then, uh, some more recently dealing with, uh, non-residents. But our cemetery dates all the way back to eighteen sixty-five. It was one of the, Kaysville was officially incorporated in eighteen sixty-eight. And so the cemetery predates our incorporation of, of Kaysville as a city. And it's a, it's a unique asset that the city has, uh, brings its own challenges and things as, as well. You can go to the next one. Uh, the first slide I wanted to highlight is just kind of a, what we're seeing, as you know, in our current FY twenty-six budget, we have a, a cremation garden, memorial garden area that we're, I just started con- construction on this last week. And this just gives you an idea of what our urn, burials and interments have been since twenty twenty, uh, to the percentage. And that percentage is the percentage of all of our interments. Uh, so twenty-one percent of all of our interments are now, uh, cremation urns. I can remember back when I first started, we would go maybe one a year, maybe zero. And now we're, this year we're up to, uh, as of today, year to date, we're at twenty-three this year. So the trend, as you can see, on a five-year average is increasing. And so I think that's why we feel the cremation garden is an important, important component of what the cemetery can offer. These numbers here, uh, maybe need a little bit of an explanation on some of them, but this is our resident versus non-resident when it comes to interments. The twenty twenty-five numbers are year to date and the twenty twenty-four and previous are all in a calendar year. And we track resident versus non-resident and you can kind of see how that trend has been over the course of the last five years. Fifty percent plus have been non-residents. Now, not all of those non-residents have purchased spaces at the time of need. And then the next slide will kind of show you, break that down into a little bit more, um, detail as far as the number of adults, urns, infants, uh, disinterments as well. But the bottom section talks about resident and then resident at need, non-resident and non-resident at need plots. The areas that we focus on a lot are the resident at need and the non-resident at need, uh, plots. As you can see in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, our non-resident at need plots were just as high as our resident at needs. And so that was what kind of spurred our internal discussions and we brought that to the city council in February is changing that non-resident at need. And so you can see the effect that that change has had in our non-resident at need, uh, plots. Year to date, uh, we've had seven. Uh, now there is a, a mechanism that the, on a, a non-resident can, uh, purchase a plot at need. The at need sales are, is how we control how fast the cemetery sells out. It'll be hundreds of years before it's qu- fully occupied. But when a space is sold out, that's when, or when a cemetery is sold out, that's where it becomes a concern. So with this trend that we're seeing now, it prolongs, we're projecting to prolong the existing cemetery we have, you know, thirty, thirty-plus years without having the need to look elsewhere at our current, uh, current trends. And if, if cremations tend to trend upwards as well, that's gonna even push that farther and farther down the road. So we appreciate the council supporting, uh, those changes earlier this year, uh, 'cause it is making a difference. Uh, as you can see just by the numbers in the, um, in the sales. Go to the next one. This is just a little fun fact, uh, within the cemetery, uh, they currently, we have a hundred new headstones that are installed every year. Currently there's over seventeen thousand five hundred headstones in the cemetery.
I didn't know that.
Each one of those headstones has to get weeded around. At least three times a year. We'd love to be able to do it more, but it just takes so much time, uh, to weed it around every headstone. And you have seventeen thousand plus headstones and you're adding a hundred new headstones every year. You have the mower operators that have to mow around seventeen thousand headstones without hitting them and things like that. It just, it is a challenge, uh, every year with, with that. And so things take longer and or some of the cemetery staff does a great job. They take a lot of flak, uh, when it isn't up to the loved ones' standards, but they do their very best to, to reach to.
I will add, my, my stake during, for the nine eleven day of service, um, spent time in the cemetery. And if more groups would do that, that would probably be really helpful.
Always, and I, that's, thank you for the plug, Mayor. That's a great, uh, the nine eleven day of service. We had two, uh, LDS stakes that came up and did, um, projects in the cemetery, weeding headstones. That, it does go a long way, uh, in helping us. This last June, we opened our last big full section, which we call, uh, Platt H, uh, to burials. Platt G is, uh, sold out, uh, but H is now where we're starting. And so where our la- last full lawn, we have another little lawn, but that's the last kind of big lawn that we have left.
That's an interesting headstone.
That picture looks, yeah, that picture looks really nice though. Your grass looks really good.
We, we do a very good job. And this cemetery, and I, it's one other thing to say thank you to the council. Uh, we did use some of our perpetual care monies in the last budget year, FY twenty-five, and redid the entire irrigation system in the old section of the cemetery. The one with the headstones is in the old section. And it has made a huge difference this year in just our, uh, water coverage. And efficiencies are ten times what they were before with the old nineteen fifties irrigation system. So it's, uh.
As you, as you get ready to move off of cemetery, I, I think the Kaysville Cemetery, I mean, having moved all over the country is by far one of the tops I've ever seen.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, it, it, you drive through there, it is pristine, um, and the care that, uh, that family members, you know, with the, the flowers that are always out.
Yep.
I, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I get.
It's beautiful.
I give credit to Jackie. She's our cemetery section. She's been on the full-time section for just over a year and she's done an amazing job. She's got the great personality to handle, uh, the cemetery. So I just appreciate the cemetery staff.
I just remember a time when it was tough to keep the lawn green.
Yep.
But this is proof that it's looking really, really nice.
It is. And it, it was simply just a matter of our hit. Our system was so old that we couldn't keep.
And obviously.
We, we can't operate an irrigation system on twenty PSI. We have to have, we have to have a little bit higher PSI. It won't work for us for twenty PSI. Uh, but the efficiencies of the new system are just, and it's just simple pipe. We were dealing with, uh, old transite galvanized that just went hydraulically. It just slows the water down. You don't get the pressures you need. So it does look good and we're.
What is the picture on the right?
So that's a, that's how we line out a grave.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it wasn't sure.
So in the cemetery, every twenty feet or so, there's a, what we call a corner marker. And so there's twelve spaces within one of those blocks. And that template right there is the size, the outside edge of that is the size of an adult, uh, grave that we dig.
Okay.
So every forty inches in the cemetery, there's a burial space. And so that template's forty-eight, forty inches by, uh, ninety-six. And so it's just an easy way, um, that's not the original. When I first started, we had another one, but we, it broke, so we, we made a new one. But that, uh, makes it just so much easier to line out. You don't have to get your tape measure out. You do have to measure from the strings, but once you get that set, you just take your shovel, mark it, take the sawed off and, and you're good to go.
Oh, that's good.
That's what, uh, that is.
Can I just point out, Cole, like, it looks like, oh yeah, you just line around that. I remember when I came and watched you guys and didn't you have to use a concrete saw to get down? Like.
Oh, yeah, you got to.
It's a lot of work for these guys, especially in the winter. So, yeah, definitely props for keeping it looking good.
This winter was probably the worst, um, even though we didn't get a lot of snow, the problem in the cemetery is when you don't get snow, snow acts as an insulation and then the grass freezes. And if you can visualize seventeen thousand he- headstones or concrete, and so when that ground freezes or starts to freeze around the headstones.
Yeah.
Um, this year, we've had it in the past, had to take jackhammers out, but this year was so bad in Ja- was it January? January, um, Councilmember Hunt came up and it was with a concrete saw, cutting the grass out just like you would a, a sidewalk, trying to get the concrete. And it froze down to about eight inches, but shovels don't do you any good at that point. So it was a, it was a concrete saw. One of the projects, it's just a maintenance project that you kind of go, why? All of our brick columns, uh, this year, not this year, they've been over the course of a few years, starting to basically disintegrate just in Mother Nature with, uh, irrigation, with rain hitting them. And so we, this year we've replaced about eighty percent of the brick columns. Uh, that's also coming out of our perpetual care, uh, funds to, uh, replace those brick columns. And it's, it's kind of a big undertaking, but we had a local, uh, mason that, uh, is great to work with and just comes and helps us and do that, Jim Wilcox. So probably recognize him down there with the chisel.
I'm sure he appreciates the angle, the picture that you took there of him.
It's not a plumber picture.
Yeah. So anyway, that's just one of the, the projects that we completed this last year along with the irrigation project.
Looks nice.
We'll go to the next one. Uh, this is our cremation garden, uh, overall. Phase one is just the blue hatch line that you can see there. That will be phase one, which is started. And then we'll, we'll hold on phase one for a number of years before we, uh, proceed to the subsequent phases. Uh, so we're excited. And that's gonna go right to the north of the cemetery, uh, office. Now, the little half moon shape on the north of that is the Angel of Hope.
Yeah, love that.
Little courtyard plaza that's going to, currently we have it temporarily located to, just to the north of that in a temporary, uh, setting. And when this project is done in phase one, it will have its permanent home there in, in that section. And the Angel of Hope was a hundred percent fundraised by, uh, local Zan Call and his, uh, family and group raised all the funds for that Angel of Hope and the con- or the granite marker that it's gonna sit on when it's all done. So it's a, it's a good thing. And that's, that's coming up December sixth.
Yeah, they have a neat.
Is the visual, uh, every year on December sixth is the Angel of Hope, uh, visual.
Cremation garden.
It's a great.
I mean, do they?
Event.
Explain to me how you bury a cremation.
So cremation, so what, what's happening, what?
That's what I don't know.
We, we don't, we don't shake the, the urn. So, uh, part of this project is we, we pre-purchase the granite markers that we install. And so when we sell those, part of the, the sell that will be the, the concrete. So they come with a, a hor- a core drilled in them. And so when the family chooses to be buried there, the, you lift the granite, you insert the remains, put the s- seal cap on it. And then they can come back and engrave their loved ones' information on that. Where the little circle is, is gonna be a, a column barium. Yeah, you've probably seen these in other cemeteries where they're about six feet tall. Be shaped in a circle. It has a face plate on it, that the face plate comes off and then the cremains, uh, can be inserted in and out.
Kind of like a shelf.
Uh, as an example, in this space, our initial estimates are we can fit about, um, it's just under, it's about a half acre. There's enough room. You could be, be tighter if we wanted to, but we can fit about three thousand, uh, cremations in this area.
Just in the blue line area?
No, in the whole area. The first phase will be about, uh, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
And then, but if you go just to the lawn north of us, Platt H, which is adult burial, which is about three to four acres.
And we got about three thousand adult spaces in that three to four acres. Um, so if the cremation memorial garden area does take off, there's other areas in the cemetery where we have already identified that we can
Build future gardens.
Um, along some perimeter areas and some other grass areas, but.
Smart.
It, it is gonna be a.
So can a person purchase, like if an at need one has one, but they want their that significant other to be with them, can you purchase two so they go next to them?
Yep. And that will come to you next year in the budget year, in our consolidated fee schedule.
Okay.
The contractor of this, because of ordering the grant and all that, it, it's, takes about three to five months for that to get here. Uh, this project will be completed by May first. We want to have it completed by Memorial Day. So as people come to the cemetery, they can see, hey, we now have this to offer.
So it's.
So it'll be in the consolidated fee schedule to begin sales in July of next year.
Same thing at need or are you gonna allow the people to buy lawns?
We are, we're having some internal discussions right now, but we're, we're kind of leaning towards the idea of having a, uh, allowing to do preneed in, in this cremation, um, section. Still talking about how does that look? Do we put a, a cap on how many preneeds we'll sell a year? Do we? Um, we're still talking about it. Hopefully we'll have some, uh, options for the city council to review as we get into the budget year.
I see what a preneed payment is then it starts paying for phase other.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's why we're really leaning that way.
How much approximately is a cremation location?
This we don't quite know.
Okay, okay. I was just curious.
We, we've got numbers. We, I don't want to say anything.
Okay, right, okay.
Uh, but we're reviewing, uh, Provo City has one. We're reviewing their numbers, uh, which will probably mimic a lot of Provo City, Twill City has one as well. And some other cities have one, a little bit different. So we're kind of just trying to figure out where those, those would go.
Right.
But, yeah, and just from a times, as times sake, uh, our burial, when we have a, a full adult burial, our crews, it's a two-person crew, takes them about, from start to finish, by the time you open and close the grave, it's about a five to six hour process.
It's not quick.
Um, in this cremation garden area, it'll be about twenty minutes. Um, in this cremation garden area, it'll be about twenty minutes, one person.
That'd be great.
Um, type deal, so.
Sounds like a good deal.
Anyway, it, it just gives the citizens an option now to, to think about that and, and saves the lawn area that's the, the premium.
Right.
Adult, um, traditional burials or premium, it just gives people an option. And we have had a lot of inquiries lately from people coming in asking and, so I think there is some excitement out there for this option for people to choose. So.
This is great, Cole, I'm glad that you're on thinking head.
We're trying, we try, so. You can go to the next slide. Um, our parks. I, I just, I wanted to show, I actually had my girls go out, uh, one day last week, I'm like, I want a picture of Pioneer Park that shows it from, you know, the, I have a, like a five-year-old, three-year-old walking down. The park, as they can see, so when we, when we create these parks, and I'll just stay here for a second, what, what we're about is giving people an experience. Uh, when they can go out into the community and, you know, having a bad day or having a rough day at home or just want to go out and walk, we want them to be able to create the mind, or have the mind create just these peaceful settings. And so this front planter in the, in front of Pioneer Park is designed to be how an old, uh, cornfield, or not cornfield, but an old row crop used to be. So if you go, if you walked farther, you could see that all these plantings are in a straight row. And this is the best time of year to look at the, the fountain grasses as they start to die off and, and stuff. And so we're grateful that the city councils allows these visions to come to life to create a barn, an old-looking barn back to the pavilion, uh, so that people can go. That is just what makes Kaysville unique. You can go to the next ones. Um, we currently maintain about a hundred and sixty-three, or we actually maintain, not about, but a hundred and sixty-three point thirty-five of acres that are developed. We consider a developed acre if it's manicured, it's got turf grass or plantings or rock or anything like that, it's, it's actually been designed and developed to look the way it does. And then we have two hundred and five acres that are undeveloped. The bulk of that is the East Mountain Wilderness Park, which is about a hundred and thirty-six of those acres is the Wilderness Park that will always stay, um, undeveloped. Uh, for biking and just getting with nature, so. Now, we just highlighted some completed projects that we've done these last couple, uh, year. Rail Trail Trailhead, the new park sign at Barnes Park, the replacement of the industry playground, pickleball resurfacing, upgrading volleyball lights at Barnes Park. Um, and all these are due to the council, uh, supporting Parks and Recreation. A couple of ones that we have coming up in this current budget year are the restroom remodel. It's a thirty-three-year-old restroom that's showing its age and looks like it's thirty-three years old, so. And at times smells like it's thirty-three years old, so, um, that's a good project. Uh, Ponds Park Pavilion is actually, uh, underway right now with its lighting and roofing upgrade. And then we're out for, uh, you probably, hopefully saw a survey link that went out, uh, for just some ideas of what to look at when we're considering redesigning Quail Crossing. With a full understanding that nothing is, is, is imminent and happening, which is as we start to design and look forward in the future, what do the citizens want to see? And as of last Thursday, we had four hundred and forty responses.
Good, will you share the results with us at some point?
Yes, we will share.
Okay, good.
We're, we're closing it tomorrow, and then we'll compile it and then
Oh, good.
we'll send out, we'll send out what those, what those all are. And that will just help with our designer, um, help that. But a component of that Quail Crossing is the, uh, streetscape on nine fifty North and Sunset. As we look at how the gateway into Kaysville from off of nine fifty North, what do we want that to look like, um, for the future, so. Hopefully we'll have all those designed ready, uh, in the new budget year and the council at that time can say, we want to do the streetscape, we don't want to do the streetscape, uh, but we'll have those designed and ready to, uh, be presented then. And then the final one is just the West Davis Corridor, the, the money that we have from UDOT. Uh, that's out, uh, for an RFP, uh, beginning next week for, to consult, a consultant to help us come up with some ideas on that. I'm not sure if you've seen recently what Syracuse did at their analog.
Yes, I did see it, actually, it was out there.
Monument signs and the big buffalo that they got.
It looks really nice.
Those are kind of the ideas that we're thinking about of how to use some of that funding is to, you know, make Kaysville be Kaysville, so.
You know, you get a score, a scoreboard to show that Pee-wee football scores, you know, what, three forty-eight to zero?
Three forty-eight to zero, yeah.
Can I add, can I add two more very small items to your current projects list?
Yes.
Uh, the splash pad, I know we've talked about this in the past, but moving some of the benches along the wall and then planting some trees that will eventually get large for shade. My wife is a regular, um, visitor of the splash pad and she's gathered about four hundred complaints about the sun.
Yeah, we, we get it. We are ordering new benches, they will be installed by the, uh, time that the splash pad opens in May. We can't, we're, we're hesitant to move the existing benches for the reason that they're bolted down to the ground.
Okay.
And when they're bolted, they've got bolts that stick into the concrete, and so.
No, you guys are leaving, I thought you were going to be the holdouts, I thought you were going to make it.
It's a school night.
Thank you for being here, sorry, Cole.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got those ordered and then trees are always, uh, on our list.
Okay, awesome. We'd love to get some trees planted this fall.
And we actually have the bench for, um, Halt Hollow at our shop, we do, so. It, it came in, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that was an oversight when we put the playground in there, we missed putting the bench back, so we've, we've got the bench, just, uh, it's at the shop right now, so.
That'll be super exciting.
It's a, it's in the break, it's in the break room.
And then, uh, we're, we're always focused on how we can be more water-conscious within our parks, because we realize that we do have a big system that we use a lot of water, uh, for, you know, the public benefit. And so we are aware of areas where we can, uh, conserve water. One of those areas is right out here in City Hall, where we tore out some grass and put some rock. We're going to put some other boulders and things to make it more appealing. Um, Barnes Park, this year we took out a park strip there by the Purdy Football Field along two hundred North Rock, um, and things like that. And then met with the contractor yesterday to start at the fire station, removing the park strip grass, um, and some stuff around the flagpole and other areas of the fire station that grass just doesn't make sense. Um, and we can go with more of a zero or zero scape type thing, so. We're, we're trying to do little projects every year to, to just try to make a difference, so. Next one. And this is just a, i- is people talk about parks, there's, in our, in our world, there's four different types of parks. There's pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, and regional parks. And this just kind of gives you a description of what each one of those parks, uh, are, is, is we view them as community, regional, neighborhood, or pocket. I'm not going to go through and read all of those, um, they're in the packet, but we have parks in each one of those categories, um, from pocket, neighborhood, community, and regional. And this is just a map from our master plan, and this, this is the vision of, of Pioneer Park, if you can see those, uh, row crop looking, uh, that lead up to the, to the barn with the, uh,
Beautiful picture.
monument there in the middle, so. But the map on the, the right, my right, is the, uh, the green is all the current parks that are developed, um, within Kaysville that we have, uh, not shown as some undeveloped property that, that we have, that, uh, well, the undeveloped is the, actually the yellow, some of those, so. And bef, and before Jason, we'll pause here, before he goes to the next, you can stop here. The next slide, there's a video. Um, our recreation staff, uh, Megan in our recreation office, we've started to do a, a weekend recap that we post on Instagram and Facebook, just gives like a thirty-second video of all the things that have happened uh, through this, uh, through that weekend or through that previous week. And so what, I had recreation staff, we asked them, was for just, they, they created, I asked them for the data, they created the video. Uh, they just kind of highlights some of the features and some of the programming that they have, so I'll not talk and let the video play. Hopefully it plays, if not, Jason may have to hit a play button. Is it going? Oh, it goes. Yeah. Um, anyway, we're just, in all total, we have about over thirteen thousand participants in our recreation uh, programming from whether that's an art class to basketball to thing. The, the one area that we are most excited about with the new fieldhouse is the opportunity to provide programming for adults and older, um, people like myself, right? I'm old now. But, uh, because I think that's an age group where we don't offer a lot of things, but this does allow that now to, uh, to kind of play, so. There are a lot of people in our community that do participate. This just highlights the citizen boards that we've kind of already talked about previously, don't need to go into much more there. Um, just some of our high-level community events. There's other things that we do as well, but these are just kind of the main ones that we do every year, and we're always looking for ways to. The biggest challenge we have is, is adding, is our bandwidth to, to add is, is limited.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's, it's always tough to add more when it's just, when you can only go so far, so. We kind of have, our focus has been, let's focus on what we do and then what we do, let's do it well. And that's where we focus with our community events. And then facilities, you're all aware of our facilities, but we have I just want to focus, about eighty thousand one hundred square feet of maintained space within our facilities, that's HVAC systems, general maintenance improvements, all that, uh, custodial services all fall, uh, under our. Uh, most of that is through contracted services, through custodial and through HVAC and, and those types of things, but we do oversee all that. And I believe my final slide is, these are just some quotes that came from our, uh, resident survey that we did back in twenty twenty-one, uh, when we did the, uh, that, that survey that helped us generate our, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I'll just read them real quick. Uh, the one resident said, "I think there is a perception in Kaysville that the West Kaysville parks are bigger and better than anything in east of I fifteen. I wish more of our east side parks had the nice amenities and facilities that the west side parks have." And we, we take those to heart, and we've invested, we feel like, uh, money this last year in making sure that our east side parks are getting the attention that they need. Gaddy Park tennis court got resurfaced, Ponds Park pavil, or, uh, pavilions getting rehabbed and things like that, so. We do listen and we are mindful that Kaysville is Kaysville, whether it's east or west. And the next slide was, Kaysville needs to acquire and preserve open space, especially nature parks. Establish interconnectedness between those spaces and existing spaces in Kaysville and surrounding communities. And I really appreciate the Kaysville City Council with all of the trail work that we've done with the trailheads at the Webb Lane and, and Flint Street and the Wilderness Park, and then working with Public Works on how we can be more active in our transportation on city streets, um, our east-west connection. We're very good at the south, north-south connection with the West Davis and the Rail Trail. Our biggest struggle is our east-west connection, and we have this big, massive road that runs right in the middle of it, I fifteen, so. Uh, but just with Josh looking for ways down the road that we can make that east-west connection, um.
I think UDOT should be doing it.
Why?
One hundred percent. They blocked it, they should put a bridge over it.
I don't disagree, so we're, we're just trying to come up with a plan, and once we have the plan, then it's, uh, I can, uh, convincing UDOT that, yeah, they need to fund it. And then the final one is just, I really think trails and bike paths benefit everyone, and that is true. They do, because it does, then it doesn't matter your age, how healthy you are, they're there for everybody to use.
I'm, I'm a witness to say that I think the Rail Trail is probably the most used park in the city. Really.
I would agree, think so.
It, I would have to say that. You just, just constantly have people on it every day, all day long.
Yeah.
I mean, uh, the other parks get used a lot, but for somebody just to go out leisurely, I would have to say that the Rail Trail is probably the most used park.
I would agree. And we, my, my family, we use the West Davis, the new West Davis Corridor Trail, because I live so close to that, but. They're awesome, so just, that's kind of our report, I didn't, we just want to focus on the things that, uh, we're grateful for and just the good things that are happening in Kaysville with, uh, Parks and Recreation. And if you have any questions, I can answer any questions.
Cole, I just want to say thank you for, um, for sharing this information. I really liked the Instagram posts and stuff. We, that's what I kept hearing more about, you know, this last, this last year, is just communicate, tell us what you're doing, and it really highlights what we're doing so well. And so appreciate that. I know it takes time to put things like that together. But, um, and, and just the fact that, like you said, Parks and Rec, and it's not just Parks and Recs, but trails and outdoor activities, it's, that's what creates a community. You know, and, and in Kaysville, we love that, that we run into our neighbors on these trails and we see each other at the parks, and we're able to participate in sports and play together, and that's what makes us special and unique, so thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to give a shout out to all, all of our staff that work on Parks and Recreation, they're amazing, uh, people, and they do an amazing job. And I'm grateful for them. Wish we could find more seasonal, so if you're seasonal, age eighteen to twenty-three.
Come get a great job.
We want you to work for us next year, so.
Yeah.
Let's make Kim's life miserable with the, too many applications, so.
Were we able to find more, um, well, part-timers this last season? I know we were having a hard time a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah, yes, uh, some things, I don't know exact, the exact reason why, but ever since we have the people, we're just not getting the amount of work out of the people
Okay.
that we used to get.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if it's something.
Uh-huh.
We blame it on COVID, because I don't know what else to, to blame it on, but ever since twenty twenty, the amount of work that we're getting out of a, a seasonal is not the same amount in a day that we used to get out of
Out of.
back in the two thousand and tens. Uh, just, they're just different, uh, kids. They're great.
Great.
They're just, the amount of work that we used to get with the same number is not quite what we used to get. And I don't know how as to, I don't know what it is, other than something happened in the twenty twenties that's changed, uh,
That's interesting.
So.
My grandpa would probably tell you, but.
Yeah.
But they are, they are, the ones we have are great.
Yeah, absolutely, we're grateful for them.
And we need them.
And it's a great job.
We.
It's a great opportunity.
And we live or die by them.
Yeah, absolutely, okay.
Can I just add that, um, sorry, did I cut anyone off?
Nope.
Uh, so my, my six-year-old, we took her to see the fireworks, and it is the day that she measures the best day of her life off of. Like, she, this is the best day of her life, and any day after that, she's like, well, no, it's still the best day of my life, so. Just know that you're providing the best day of people's lives sometimes and, or, and a lot of the times, and, and I appreciate all the work you guys do in making us a community.
My little four-year-old granddaughter plays soccer, and she thinks she's the bomb, she loves it. Cole, it's just so neat. And we go to the parks and Lee's just and I, you know, my husband's very particular about grass and such. Yes, and so he, and he's just so proud to be able to live here and play here, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Only thing I want to say is, I, the governor's got this real initiative for Connect Utah, and there's some money out there, and if there's something we can do to help you to connect east-west, let us know. And I think we need to start advocating more for that right now, because there's he's really, this is a big deal to him, Connect Utah, and, uh, right now, we're having a hard time connecting east-west, which involves a lot of people, so we should be able to help you, I hope.
You are.
I was going to say, we really are, we're very actively involved with West Edge Front Regional Council and the transportation programming and
and Public Works, Josh and Dexter are constantly, and, uh, so, yeah, we're.
We're definitely making that a priority.
We really talked about trying to get something that connects the West Davis Corridor Trail to the Rail Trail, and we haven't got anything yet. And we really should have something, we need something.
We're working with the county, I know Josh is working with the county on that, um, so, yes, we're chasing that money.
Absolutely, and I think we'll be successful.
Thank you. Try to be done by eight, I didn't make it.
Yeah, you did great. Thank you, thanks, Cole. Okay, council member reports, um, my brief report is just that, uh, we had a ribbon cutting today for the welding center at Davis Tech, pretty amazing amenity in our community. Davis Tech is a huge resource. Um, the programming up there is incredible, the building is state-of-the-art, and it provides a lot of great technical opportunities for, for people all over, all over the state, but especially here in Davis County, they're great careers, so. That was kind of fun. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
For Nick and Jay. I have a question for Nick and Jason. Since the tax did not pass, do we not at some point need to adopt a budget, a resolution adopting a budget, so we can get our money from the county? So we have a certified tax rate?
That's a great question, we'll, I'll look into it.
Will ya? Because right now, they're collecting the money, and this is when it gets divvied out, and so I think we have to have it.
I think you might be right, I'll check when we're in and we'll make sure you follow up.
Okay, Jason.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have some calendar items, I think everyone got the email or saw it, but in case you didn't see it, there is that joint work session next Thursday with the Planning Commission and the council. We'll have dinner at six, and then have an opportunity to just interface with the Planning Commission, talk about whatever is on your mind, and, and also hear from the consultant on the small area plans, so should be a good opportunity. Is everyone, down on everyone's calendar, is everyone planning to go to that next Thursday?
Yeah, I'm out, I'm out of town.
Okay.
I have a mosquito board meeting.
Oh, that's right, I saw that, okay.
So there's two people there, so I, I just asked an invite to be sent out, because I didn't have it on my calendar, so, as long, yeah, I think I should come.
Oh, perfect. And then the other calendar thing is, we're still trying to coordinate details for those who are interested. I know most of you have responded on the range shooting, and so that's two o'clock next Friday, Friday of next week, and they asked, so initially, it sounded like they were going to have more to just offer, like, you know, their own ammo and, and arms, but they're saying really, they're asking us to bring our own if we can, so if you, if you have ammo and your own arm.
BYOB.
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly. They'll have, they'll.
They're having department heads, but.
Oh, my gosh, I will bring my guns, I'm excited.
Yes. And that's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, with someone like, oh, actually, we need to make a motion then to go into a closed session.
I will make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss all the things written on IMA.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay, all right, thank you, audience.
Department heads, that's how it's going to be, gunnering, department heads.
Funny guy.